Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Here.
Rhodes. Eric Spinks. Eric Coate.
Here.
Mezek. Eric Janus.
Here.
Thor.
Here. Uh, council, you have the minutes of the work session of October 1st, 2018. Any corrections? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janus, call the roll.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coate.
Epstein.
Mezek.
Epstein.
Janus.
Yes.
Thor.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of October 1st, 2018. Any corrections or changes to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by somebody? Huh? Yeah. Second, by Heather. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coate.
Yes. Oh, Epstein.
Mezek. Epstein. Janus.
Yes.
Thor.
Yes.
Now, it comes to one of my, everybody knows, one of my favorite parts of the meeting is the presentations. We have a pretty neat one tonight. We have a business in town that's celebrating their 70th anniversary. That's pretty cool. And, uh... And I'd like to present this to Chainsaw Sales. We just want to give this, uh, maybe 70 years of business, that's a long time to be doing anything. Some of it's a very long time to be doing.
Very long. I can't claim all of it.
No?
No, no. About 50.
Right there with your dad, right? Was that Orville?
Correct. Right.
Well, let me read this, then we'll get into this. "Certificate of recognition, recognition to Chainsaw Sales. The city of Bedford, Ohio wishes to express congratulations to Chainsaw Sales Incorporated as it celebrates its 70th anniversary in Bedford. Chainsaw Sales Inc. was started in October of 1948 by Orville J. Smith after his return from World War II and has been owned and operated by the Smith family. During the last 70 years, Chainsaw Sales has provided still steel, outdoor power equipment and services for the area and are located on Broadway Avenue, part of the auto mile in historic Bedford. This business has been an integral part of the continued growth and prosperity of our community. On behalf of the city council, administration, and all the citizens of Bedford, we offer our sincere congratulations to Chainsaw Sales Inc. on their 70th anniversary and extend our best wishes for many more years of continued success."
Thank you very much.
I need to say something.
Oh.
Well, I'm not sure. I don't do it all myself.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure what I'm going to say to everyone, but I know that some faces here look familiar, so I want to say thank you as a customer. And I just, you know, we try our best to service the community and the surrounding area as well as we can, and we have tried for the last 70 years. Thank you very much and look forward to seeing all of you coming in the front door.
Now, that's good. Now, we got to do business. We have old business, ordinance number 9646-6-18.
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 8934-12 of section 110503 entitled Rental Rates for the Ellenwood Recreation Center and declaring an emergency.
It's our wish to put that on second reading. Have a motion for such. By Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coate.
Yes.
Mezek.
Yes.
Janus.
Yes.
Thor.
Yes.
Ordinance number 9647-18.
Allowing employee participations, uh, participants to make insurance plan premium contributions on a pre-tax basis for the calendar year 2019 through Wage Works and declaring an emergency.
And again, we wish to put this on second reading, so motion for such by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coate.
Yes.
Mezek.
Yes.
Janus.
Yes.
Reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items, I wanted to give a quick update on the last street that we are working to finish for the road program this year, and that being Powers. Um, we are going to be working from the underpass, making concrete repairs under that underpass, going all the way towards the end of the cul-de-sac. There are some repairs that need to be done on the top portion from Broadway down to the underpass. That alone, that section, that is all concrete, it is in extremely poor condition to replace all of that concrete. We wouldn't have enough money left in this year's road program. Just that portion would be about $200,000. So what we're looking to do is make the necessary repairs to that piece and then identify a funding source which Sean France's service department is looking at for a potential grant to come back in the spring to do that top portion. What we didn't want to do, I mean, we could start cutting out different pieces, cut down the center line and cut all the joists and make concrete repairs that way, but to be quite honest with you, as the years go on, you're going to end up with something similar to how Soul and Road is right now. And it's uneven, and I felt, and we felt, the administrative staff is, listen, let's get by, we need to do it once, we need to do it the right way, and best piece, the best option is, is to do that top portion most likely next year. But we will conclude the rest of it this year. Over in that area, West Glendale, there is a closure, a railroad closure. That was supposed to start last week. The railroad notifies us and sends us notice of when repairs are going to be made and when those closures will take place. It did not start last week. They sent us an update late Thursday that it would start today and go for a period of two weeks. We sent out notices as quickly as we could. We notified, obviously, dispatch and School District. So be patient, they're going to be making some repairs to the one crossing. Obviously, needed repairs, but we understand that it is, it's an inconvenience. One thing to look out for, that we're going to be really pushing hard to advertise over the next month and a half, is going to be a new mass notification system. This notification system is going to be called 911 Cellular, and we're going to be putting, sending information out via the water bill. We're going to use our Code Red for those that are signed up for the Code Red, we're going to use that. Look for our website. It is a new system. Our Code Red system, it works well. Um, it's a little dated, but it, over the years, it's been useful. The one piece with this is it costs us somewhere between $8,000 and $10,000 a year for that system. 911 Cellular isn't going to cost the city anything. It's offered to us through the Sugarin Valley Dispatch, and we want to take advantage of that. So we understand there's going to be a little, you know, learning curve. Our idea is to really go live using this new system in January, so we're going to spend the next couple months getting this out. You know, for those of you that come to all the council meetings, I'm going to be driving you crazy because I'm going to say the same thing over and over again. Look forward on our website, probably mid to end, I'm sorry, it's already mid, end of October. Look forward on, there's going to be a link that you click on. It takes you right to the page, you enter in your information, you're done. What we're doing right now is we are practicing, both chiefs and myself. We went through a full training last week. We've set up groups internally, and we're, you know, learning the system, practicing, sending messages out through, you know, messages will go out to all the first responders, making sure that there's no kinks, that we understand how the system works. But it's definitely going to be a plus, and it saves the city a substantial amount of money. So look for that information, it'll be in the water bill, it'll be in Code Reds, we'll send out a couple of those. And again, it's called 911 Cellular, so definitely sign up for that. The city, and we're going to be passing, or hopefully passing, ordinance in a little bit, but we did work to put together a grant for NOACA, it's an $80,000 planning or a study. That money will be used for, and that is to fund a study for our connector project. You know, we really have done a lot of homework for this project already, and we are looking at different funding sources, but we view this as almost kind of like a backup to if the funding sources that we're currently going after fall through, we're pretty confident that this project falls in line with what NOACA funds. The trick with NOACA is, before they give you any dollars for construction, you have to go through a planning study. This funds the planning study, so it's an $80,000 grant, we actually submitted last Thursday, and hopefully we're successful. And lastly, just a friendly reminder, the children's Halloween party will be on the 27th down at Ellenwood. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
And, I'm sorry, Wayne, congratulations.
Mr. Water Raptor.
Just briefly, congratulations to Wayne, and also remind everybody that tomorrow is National Bosses Day, and I'd like to thank all my bosses here, the mayor and council, for allowing me to be in service, as well as all of the residents of the community. Other than that, well, November 2nd is going to be, I've got to remember to change the clocks back, is that the 4th? I'm sorry, the 4th. I don't think we'll see it before that, so give you a little reminder, they, they're Sunday, November 4th, or Saturday, November 3rd, turn the clocks back, or forward, right?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Finance Raptor.
Uh, yes, congratulations, Wayne, once again. It's a wonderful place down there. For those of you who use the online tax system, I'm not sure how many of you sort of do that for your filing, the system is starting to get old, it's really past its time. It's been 15 years that we've been using it, it had one, it's worn, renovation back in 2003, but as time goes on, the way it was programmed, that old software, very few people are utilizing that nowadays. We do have a new program that we're looking at for a relatively inexpensive amount compared to what we could have paid, getting a good deal. So at this point, we're looking to put a new online tax system that will start effect in 4/18, which will be in next year's filings. Little difference is, there'll be, the process requires a registration and after January 15th to obtain a PIN code for yourselves, a little more security about how you enter information. And I will have a couple of training sessions that'll hold publicly with the company to show the demo of the program as we have seen it already. It's not too complicated, it's pretty straightforward, but it has a couple of different nuances to it, and with the security, and also one nice thing, it does file directly to our system. However, we will, for the first year, require the paperwork to go with it, just so we get everybody used to the fact of making sure you file properly. And after that, we'll take a look at what we want to do from there, but it does have advantages of actually filing online, which the other one did not. Some people thought it did, we were kind enough to copy your paperwork from behind the scenes, so to speak, and process for you, and then get a whole room for proper documents. But we will look for that change to start in 2019, 40, 2018 tax year. So that will be one of the new changes on our new website, and we'll still have the ability to pay your bills on charge card online also. But we will be using our municipal tax system, company that has their own system that goes directly within the program itself. So look for changes to occur on that. I'll have a couple of dates set up, perhaps in November, that we can actually hold public meetings, I'll be here to take you through that, and we'll go from there, and then that will help out, so you should be ready by January to register. It's not that complicated, still entering your W2s. It does have some limitations in the area, you can only do two cities on a W2 at a time, so if you had some extras that were on there for some reason, you would use our, but let us do the work. But those are similar limitations we have now with our tax system also, so it'll be a very good system and look forward to using it, and obviously, we'll be there to help you too, our staff. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Before we get to council, I just want to thank Don for filling in last meeting, had a family emergency come up during the work session and had to leave, and our vice mayor was unable to be here, so be the old guy on council, he...
Not by age.
The senior members.
In the mail.
He got to preside over the meeting, so thank you. We're not getting into that.
I know.
We already did our age with 70 years for chainsaw. But anyhow, thanks, Don. And you can start off with your reports.
I get to be first tonight. I didn't know you were here, I brought my chainsaw, I killed the chain over the weekend.
We can take care of it.
Yeah, you usually do. Very good, by the way, too, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you'll be here for many more years to come. First things first, uh, I don't know if you've...
Where'd Mike go?
He's right here.
He's hiding behind you.
Yes.
I don't know if you've been out to Lincoln, but they've delivered all the pipes, and they're getting ready to get going on that. I've had several concerns from some residents there that backing out of their driveways could become very difficult because, once again, it's a residential street that isn't, how would you say, wide with narrow driveways, and sight distance could be a problem if they're blocking tree lawns, so, or parked in the street, depending on what, where they're going to be, too, so just keep that in note. You may hear from some residents on that street because they're worried they're not going to be able to get out, and they don't want to get hit backing out. A big complaint that I've gotten here recently is both the Berwin intersection and the Columbus Road intersection with Northfield Road. It appears, and I actually witnessed it myself, sitting up there just to see whether or not it's happening, there are a lot of people running that red light on Northfield Road. I mean, a lot of people, you know, it's not, it's one thing to run it when it's yellow, it's another to have two or three cars go through it when it's already red, especially up at Berwin because the school's up there. These people aren't even slowing down, they're just running the light. So if we could get some special attention up there, maybe we can get some of these cars to pay a little bit more attention, uh, to stop running the light. Like I said, it's one thing to run it as yellow, but when you're running them as red, we're going to have an accident there that we're not going to want. So if we could look into that one, that would be appreciative, too. And the Powers Road, if we're going to do that section up by the tracks and whatnot, that road should be 13 to 15 inches thick because of the semis that go on that, that's, that pavement was designed back in the 50s. It's only a nine-inch pavement, and it wasn't designed for the heavy truckloads that are going over that right now. So, as I mentioned, I believe at the last meeting, I think we really ought to do full depth concrete repair over there and put the proper thickness in there for that type of pavement. Not the fact that I've worked as a highway engineer for many, many years, but that's generally the thicknesses that are going in for semi areas now is anywhere from 13 to 15 inches, so... And then one last thing, Northfield Road, where the county tore down the house, have we figured out what's causing that dip in the road yet? Because if it starts snowing, our snowplows, if they hit that, they're going to do some damage to the snowplows. That road has dipped several inches. I don't know if they've had a chance to look at it as far as what's causing that. Probably, it's the 42-inch water line that went in there a number of years ago, and knowing Cleveland, they probably used sand as the backfill, and it probably washed out, now the road's collapsing. I'm just guessing at that, but it's right in that same general area, but we have a problem over there, because the road has dropped. Thank you. I'm, one other thing, that manhole that keeps spouting water at Lincoln and Columbus, I know that pipe's undersized. I'm hoping that the work that the gas company does doesn't do anything to make that more complicated, but that manhole does blow water out through the holes in the manhole cover. Anytime we get a heavy rain, it's been doing that for many, many years. I don't think we can do much without enlarging the pipe, probably on Columbus Road, but just to bring that to light, if nothing else, we can blame it on Dominion and get them to do something with it, but I doubt that'd work either, but they're going to be out there working on that old stretch of Lincoln, so concerns are still there on that location. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. How are you guys this evening? Okay. So first of all, I wanted to let everyone know that we've been delivering welcome packets for a couple of months now, it's been going very well. Unfortunately, the system that we have can really only tell when we have new residents if they've bought a home. So if anyone knows a renter who's moved in recently to the area, please let me know, and I can make sure that they can get a welcome packet. We are also looking for people to deliver welcome packets. If you have an interest in spending an hour or so a month delivering welcome packets, please let me know, and I'll add you to our list. Next, we continue to work with Bedford Downtown Alliance to get the revitalization of our downtown area going. We currently have plans to launch First Fridays starting in March. We're also looking at a chocolate walk. We are looking for volunteers to help pull off the events that we have planned, plus some cleanup activities that we would like to do in the downtown area. If you have an interest in becoming a volunteer, please let me know, and I will add you to that list. Lastly, the Garden Club's currently selling bean soup, if anyone's interested in purchasing it. It's $4.50 per bag, it's very tasty, we've been selling it for many, many years now. If you would like to purchase some, you can either visit the Garden Club's website at bedfordgardenclub.com, or let me know, and I will get that taken care of, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Mike, on the welcome packets, can some of the other council people please have some of those?
Oh, sure, no, it...
No, I'm talking to Mike.
Okay.
So Mike, yeah, because I think I'd asked one time, because as I do daily drives, it's, I know when someone new moves in, so it would be nice to have that. I've made up my own little card with when trash picks up and different things and everything, but it'd be nice to have those in the cars to get out. Mike, I know I spoke to you about a week or so ago, and I've been complaining, bitching about this speeding on Grand Boulevard, on Willard Boulevard. I did this just in the last year, it's, it's got out of control. I know I had spoke to you last week because I sat there, my recliner was not feeling well last week, and sat in the recliner at my window and counted 34 cars that didn't even attempt to stop, didn't even make an attempt to stop. Speed limit's 25, and I guarantee, I know, over the past couple of years, we put the signs up, well, sure, you're not going to catch any speeders when there's a sign blinking, they're going to slow down. And so we had spoken about maybe possibly painting a big yellow line in front of the stop sign on the areas of Columbia, of course, the biggest one is right there in front of my house at Grand, 265 Grand in Natalie. And then they don't stop at the one coming the other way, there, Kenyon in Grand, and then Beckfleet and Southwood on Grand, same thing, front of Helen's house up there. Sometimes they don't, like I said, they use that as a pass-through, I know they're doing Willard same way, and also, I've been getting complaints about Greencroft, right there, Greencroft in front of the park, same thing, flying through. We've been lucky, there hasn't been an accident, but I don't know why we have to wait till there's an accident. There was an incident today where a guy followed a guy home from an incident that happened, not really an incident, a little bit of road rage from Rockside, and again, he didn't attempt to stop at the stop sign, then got out of his car, blocked the guy's driveway on Natalie, and threatened it, and so we went on that. But it's just, you know, it's, it's getting crazy, it's, like I said, I don't, I don't know what we do to stop this, I've been bitching about this for years and years, and our guys on the order, I know we're shorthanded, our guys were set on Natalie, whatever, they write tickets, so I, you know, I don't know what we're going to do. And they'll even, I've even seen them pass, when someone does stop, I've seen them pass a person at the stop sign. And they're sort of giving the naked model of the cars, I know they go by so fast, can't get the driver's, the license plate number, but the car that was the, the black Jetta today, Volkswagen Jetta, he's one of them, never even attempts to stop. So I hope to get something done before someone, you know, if it wasn't right there at my window, it wouldn't mind one of those flashing, flashing lights, because I've even had, I've even yelled at them, I've had them back up and ask me what I was yelling at them for, and I was like, "Stop sign there, there's a stop sign there." And they're like, "Well, you didn't have to yell at me," and I said, "Well, you couldn't stop, I didn't see it." It's really stupid, come on. So maybe a bright yellow, I know, we can't put a speed bump, I would love to have a speed bump there, we can't, because of the snowplows in the wintertime. So I don't, you know, that's not a solution, I would love to have some of those strips where it would hurt the car if they, if they didn't slow down, so I don't know, I don't know if you asked if we could do the yellow, I know they have them in Zola, I know they have them in Shaker, it's just a great big yellow spot on the street, so they can't say, "Oh, I didn't see it." It's, that's not this, that's definitely won't be an excuse that they'll be able to use, so, but we have to do something before the kids are, aren't adult, we have a lot of seniors that walk their dogs and have to cross over the road, and I'm worried to death that one of our elderly people out walking their dogs is going to get hit by one of these people that continue to use that as a speed strip.
End of report. Thank you. Mrs. Mezek.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, we have a beautiful group of people tonight, and I do have a special lady here tonight also. Ward 4 has shown up tonight, and she's sitting in the second row. That is my dear neighbor, Pam. She's a simple lady, and she's, she's in tune with Bedford, she loves Bedford, she's been here for quite a while now, and I want to also express my apologies for not being here for the last meeting, I missed all the excitement. But who is going to sit in the mayor's chair? Fortunately, Don, next in line, got it, so that's okay. But one time, go back. Usually, it's all that, past few weeks have been pretty rough on everybody, it's been condolences after condolences, but tonight, we got kudos coming to everybody. First off, Wayne, it's been more than 40 years, you and I, and your chainsaw place has been in Bedford, and you've been a great friend, and on boards with us for the city, and I want to say congratulations and many more years of cutting things up. And then we also have a firefighter by the name of Brian Hardy, who is now down in Florida cleaning up and searching for... cleaning up and searching for people in homes that were damaged by Hurricane Michael. We did an interview with him last evening on the phone, on the TV, and my heart goes out to all the people that do this rescue and recovery work, because it's a risky job and you're giving up your home life with your family to go out and help another person. And you know what? I love helping other people, not only every time I'm here to talk to you or at my home or in the area, all the time. And there's a few people that doubt that, but we'll just let that slide right now. I also want to say, are we going to prepare for the leaf collection and when will that be starting? Sure, Michael?
We're prepared and once they fall.
Once they come. Once a week, once a month.
We'll have three separate crews out going from, you know, ward to ward. So we're all ready to go. You know, we're hopeful that it holds off for a little while longer because as soon as we pull those three separate crews off, it's gonna take away from some of the other repairs that we're trying to get done just right before the winter. So they're ready to go. We know that some of the leaves are, you know, they're just starting to trickle, but we haven't started doing a canvas of the city yet.
Well, we'll let you know as soon as we see a hold on. Another thing is, thank you for the reconditioning and paving of Lee Road South, well appreciated by people in County Two and the ones that use that road. And also, I want to piggyback on Sandy with the Fast and the Furious drivers, you know, Speedway Button Road and Ward Four area has our dedicated speeders, and I'd like to see one day one of them get stopped and ticketed. You can't do it at all times because it's gotta be called in as soon as it happens, but the gas pedal comes before the police, so you gotta wait to turn. That's another issue, but we're gonna keep you reminded that we do need more tickets to go out there for eight days like everybody else, but they also have to remember that there are people and residents in the area and they don't need to go flying up streets. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Januz.
Thank you. Just wanna thank everyone for their kindness and condolences. Me and my family, you can see down the bathroom of my mother. She died after a sudden grief illness in her own home with my sisters by her side, and there are many miracles that happened around that time. I believe she was a model citizen, not identic for involvement in organizations or clubs or selling raffle tickets or buying raffle tickets, but she was just a good neighbor, very accepting and tolerant. It occurs to me that all the old timers who have stayed in Bedford, who live in Bedford are really those of you who bring a real stability to our neighborhoods and our community, and it's really a wonderful thing. I mean, we have a businessman here that's here for seventy years. That's a stability that really we really enjoy, but we don't often consider. A lot of people say Bedford's changing, Bedford's changing and changing for the worse, but my mother always thought Bedford was changing for the better because, like, she remembers when the roads were made out of dirt and she didn't have running water in her house and the well water was horrible, so she always thought things were on the up and up. From her religious upbringing, she always believed that if you have issues with your neighbor, you should firstly bring it up with your neighbor before you call the city officials. And certainly, if you don't make way with your neighbor, that's what the city officials are here for. We heard coming up, she never went along, she never allowed us to say, "Well, you know, all the other kids were doing it." That was not an excuse for us. And when me and my sisters tried to get each other in trouble, she said, "Well, she's in trouble, but you're in trouble too for tattling." So that's the way she was, but she was always a very kind person, I think a lot of you know, and she would do anything for anyone. The mid-permeable legacy is she didn't leave, you know, a lot of money, so it's just a house. If the city of Bedford has its way, maybe we won't be able to sell it, see how that goes, but it's a beautiful home. It's one of the nicest houses on Long Street certainly, so we should be able to work through all that. Now, the long-term legacy is something else that I'm gonna have to work on probably for the rest of my life because to me, my mother was the kindest and most compassionate person I've ever met in my life, and she was preceded in death by my father, who I always thought was the smartest person, the wisest person I had ever met. I was always taught that to whom much is given, much is expected in return, so I troubled that. Possibly, I would never be able to live up to the gifts that I have been given in having great parents that I've had. But I think my mother gave me a little clue what to do. The last words to me were, "Wally, never lose your faith in God." Thank you. End of report.
Thank you, Wally. And I knew your mom and dad, they were both great people.
Mr. Fluharty.
Thank you. Mike, I just wanna ask one question too. We started that program with replacing these sidewalks that three roots are busting up.
We're actually ironing that out as we speak. I should have clarification after staff meeting tomorrow, but we will be replacing walks this year.
Okay, because I know we've got a couple already reported.
Correct, I have those on the list.
Just wanted to know, so if anybody has any problems with that in their own property, to contact one of us so we can put you on the list. Also, since it's the time of year with the leaves, I've had to remind a few people already quit sweeping them in the streets and piling them up and stuff like that that we've been already, or at least I have already, and a couple of people, but to remind everybody to put the leaves on the tree lawn and not in the streets because that causes a lot of problems with the sewers and all kinds of damage that we already, we don't need any extra help with the infrastructure, so. That's it, end of report.
Thank you. Just wanna remind everybody, directed the city manager to talk to the police department about cars parking on lawns. It's gotten to be an epidemic in town, and we need to just ticket every one of them we see that are on there. There's just so many, I can't believe, there's a street I don't go down, there's not a car parked on the lawn, there's cars parked in the grass behind you, they got them hidden with garbage cans, and it just kills the look of the neighborhoods and it's just been rampant lately. I've never seen it this bad in town. Occasionally, somebody would pull in there, they have a party or something, but parking overnight and all during the day, it's just not tolerable anymore. We need to get a handle on that before it gets totally out of hand and we look like some third world country with cars all over the place. So if you happen to know anybody in the grass, tell them, better get them off, because we're gonna start ticketing. And with that, let's get on to new business. Ordinance number ninety-six forty-eight dash eighteen.
Amendment ordinance number ninety-five thirty-three dash seventeen, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Hawthorne Valley Youth Council for the purposes of sponsoring students in the program for the year 2018 through 2019 and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Can you just?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. I can tell you, some of you that come regular to meetings, you've seen some of these kids come to give reports at our meeting. They're remarkable kids and we're so happy to sponsor them. They learn much of the legal processes that go on in cities. They actually go down to Columbus and sit in the Supreme Court down there and do mock trials for the Supreme Court. I mean, it's pretty awesome what these kids do, so I think all of us are so proud of what they do and we're real happy to be able to sponsor these kids to do that, so. That's what that Hawthorne Valley is all about. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Can you just?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-six forty-nine dash eighteen.
An ordinance, amendment ordinance number ninety-five thirty-eight dash seventeen, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the city during the 2018 year and declaring an emergency.
And by motion for suspension by Fluharty, second by Januz. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Can you just?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Mizek, second by Rhodes.
Yeah, this is the ordinance to update our budget in regards to our public health contracts, our income tax refunds that we have to put out this year. We have to put extra funds into those areas, as well as demolition for a couple houses that we have. We were able to obtain SEAL grants, two of them. The SEAL funds were finally, the burn funds were released through the state, which is our SEAL Nakharik programs. And they were very good about getting two grants this year and sizable ones, and one of the few cities that does still get those grants in our area, so kudos to them in doing that. As to also, the court had another grant for their technical programs and our NOPEC study for our garden for energy efficiency. And for our refugees, we were spending a little bit higher just in case I wanted to appropriate more funds for that, so I asked council to pass that on the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Questions, call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Can you just?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-five twenty-eight dash eighteen.
Resilution authorizing the city manager to enter into a two-year contract on behalf of the city of Bedford with the General Health District of Cuyahoga County for health services for the years 2019 and 2020 and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Can you just?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, Saunders, second by Rhodes.
Thanks, Mayor. This is a contract that is stated with the Board of Health. Under the Ohio Revised Code, it does stipulate that we have to either have our own department internally or we contract through another entity. Obviously thus, we're looking to contract with the Board of Health. They offer a handful of services from animal control, environmental health, emergency preparedness. We've used them a handful of times each and every year for a wide range of items. Most recently, Mom assisted us with either vacant or abandoned homes, checking the conditions of homes, and even helping us with preparation of legislation, so very good entity to work with, and they're very responsive for the city when we contact them.
Yeah, it only costs us less than five dollars a person to do that, so it's a pretty good deal, certainly far cheaper than if we had our own department here. They do a lot of good. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Can you just?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, Spinks, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. This is the NOACU grant that I had spoke about earlier regarding the total was for eighty thousand dollars and it'll help fund a study for our connectivity project, which is pedestrian and bike trail down Willis Street through the parks and the bridge connecting to Egbert.
Good. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Can you just?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, Spinks, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. This is the NOACU grant that I had spoke about earlier regarding the total was for eighty thousand dollars and it'll help fund a study for our connectivity project, which is pedestrian and bike trail down Willis Street through the parks and the bridge connecting to Egbert.
Good. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Can you just?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Maury, if you please stand up for a minute. It's Chuck Maury of the year. Appreciate your stepping forward to volunteer.
My pleasure.
And we have a motion to appoint George Green to the Board of Building Standards and Appeals. And again, it's a yes or no vote. We have a, we need a motion for that by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Can you just?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Thank you. Both of you for stepping forward. It's a really great thing for council that we have people out there to step up and work on our boards, otherwise we'd have to be doing it every night of the week. But they perform a valuable service in that they have a different look at situations as they come up, and obviously council has the last word on accepting their advice, but you guys do the footwork to get to where we're at and help us out a great deal, so again, thanks to both of you, and we're always looking for potential board members, so anybody that would like to possibly serve on one of our boards, just contact Lori Billers at our clerk's office and put your name in there, she'll let you know what you have to do. It's not a whole lot, but it's valuable, valuable service to the city that when you guys step forward, and ladies, step forward and do this job for us, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you. And now it comes to that portion of the meeting, hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment. One at a time.
My name is Dr. Carlton William Mathis. I live at ninety-three Harriman Avenue, and I would just like to remind Mr. Mayor that the word or the term "third world" is no longer appropriate, has not been so actually since the Cold War, but if you're referring to an economically developing area with a median income of forty-one thousand dollars, then maybe the comparison is slightly appropriate.
Stay corrected, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Ron Balanick, living ninety-seven Echwood. You know, up there where Bingo Hall was, they put up some- They put up some crosswalk signs a hundred and fifty feet apart, no lines. So where are you supposed to cross? You just put them up a couple of days ago.
I haven't been down that way yet. We can, we can-
Well, I think, you know, like here, downtown Bedford, it's what, ten feet? Bedford Hospital, ten feet? And you're talking over a hundred feet. Where are you supposed to stop?